Paris Niren.
Welcome everyone to the San Rafael City Council meeting for Monday, September 13th. I'll invite the city clerk to call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
President.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Here.
Councilmember Yanans Galati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All of us are here. I invite the city attorney to report out on the closed session we just had.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the council, staff, members of the community. No reportable action was taken in closed session this evening.
Thank you so much. So welcome everyone to the people we can see on the screen and the people that we can't. If this is your first city council meeting, we love that we start with all the staff members so you can see all the men and women who are working hard every day to keep our city functioning. Tonight is an off-cycle meeting, you might have noticed. Last Monday was Rosh Hashanah, so shanatova and Happy New Year to everyone who is celebrating the New Year. So September is an especially meaningful month as two days ago, we commemorated the 20th anniversary of 9/11. Even though two decades have now passed, most of us remember where we were that day when those terrible events unfolded. We have deep gratitude to the first responders who ran towards the danger as everyone else was running away. We hold in our hearts both the brave people who lost their lives saving others, as well as the ordinary people who also lost their lives as they were simply going about their day. Locally, our first responders marked the moment this past Saturday with a bell tolling and a small ceremony at the Public Service Center. Tonight, I will close these comments and start our meeting with a land acknowledgement as we honor the original indigenous people who have lived and are living in San Rafael. The city is traditionally home to the Coast Mewaw people, and we thank the original caretakers of this land and honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. With that, I am going to turn to the city attorney, and she can share with the public how they can participate in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. At this time, I'd like to ask staff to turn their cameras off. Thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to announce that tonight's city council meeting will include Spanish language simultaneous interpretation, provided by qualified interpreters on the Spanish Zoom channel now through the completion of Agenda Item 6A. You can join the Spanish channel by clicking on the interpretation icon in Zoom, which looks like a globe. And we have posted the link to the Zoom meeting in the description of our YouTube video. As a reminder, we asked that everyone participating tonight, please speak slowly to allow our interpreter to effectively express your comments. And at this time, I'd like to invite Charles to provide that same message in Spanish.
Antes de comenzar, queremos anunciar que la junta esta noche incluirá la interpretación simultánea en español, por medio de los intérpretes calificados en el canal español de Zoom, a partir de ahora hasta completar el artículo agendado número 6. A. Se puede unir al canal de español por hacer clic en el icono de interpretación en la barra de herramientas de Zoom, parece un globo de rajeo. También publicamos un vínculo para la junta en Zoom, en la descripción del video en YouTube. Ojo, pedimos que todos los participantes hablen despacio para permitir que el intérprete exprese los comentarios de una manera eficaz.
Thank you. This meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube where viewers can provide comments by telephone by calling 669-900-9128 and use the meeting ID 817-3692-0337 pounds, or they can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. Please note, we are no longer accepting public comments through YouTube. If you're commenting over the telephone, please press star nine when Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. And once you've heard a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. If you're commenting through Zoom, please use the raise hand feature and let us know you would like to speak and wait until you've been unmuted. Closed captioning is also available for this meeting, and I'll include that in the Zoom chat now. Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk, and we will keep reminding each other to speak slowly. Welcome, Charles. Thank you for providing the service. The first item on our agenda is open time for public expression. That is any item that is not on tonight's agenda. City clerk, there any public that would like to comment?
So once again, if you're participating on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature, and if you're participating by phone, please press star nine and you'll hear a notification that I'm requesting to unmute. At that point, you'll press star six. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comments, and they will be muted once time has elapsed.
Thank you. Eva Crisanti, I was going to say something else, but having heard Mayor Kate Collins' comments, I do have to say, as someone who lived through the 9/11 attacks in New York and all that came after, I really have to say it's offensive hearing a description of the brave firefighters who ran into the building without noting the reality that the reason they ran into the building is because they were erroneously instructed to run into the building and because there was a serious failure of communications brought to you by our former mayor, Rudolph Giuliani, who completely foulled up the location of the emergency command center and left everyone with very poor walkie-talkies. There were so many foul-ups. It's too long to go into, but the politicization of the grief and trauma that those of us who lived through the events experienced, as well as the grief and trauma that millions of people around the world have had to experience as a result of the occupations and bombings and general foul-ups of our foreign policy. That the very fact that 9/11 continues to be manipulated and used as a political talking point really is, it's regrettable, it's also nauseating. Now, I want to move on. Since Rudolph Giuliani was not the only highly disappointing mayor I have known in my life. We're almost at the one-year anniversary of the death of the unhoused woman under the freeway overpass in Marin. And this came two weeks and I believe a day after Mayor Kate Collins.
I'll give everyone a few more seconds if anyone else would like to provide public comments. I see no hands raised at this time. I'm going to give just a couple more seconds. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. We will turn to the city manager's report. City Manager Jim Schutz.
Thank you, Mayor Kate and council. I have one really brief announcement, and then I'd like to spend the remainder of the city manager report on the topic of wildfires. The brief announcement is that we have been providing updates at city council meetings as to when we would likely be back in person again in the city council chambers, which we all are longingly looking forward to. I've been conferring with Mayor Kate, and we were originally hoping that perhaps it could be this month or next month. And I think it's become more and more clear that that's not going to be possible due to the Delta variant and the timing of vaccinating everyone in our community, including those under 12, and the timing of booster shots and that sort of thing likely won't be back in person this calendar year. The obvious overarching goal is to make sure that we have a safe space, and we want to do everything we can to create that environment. So our current expectation is January, or maybe I should, it would be better to say no sooner than January, but I think January is the target now that we are hoping to be able to get back together in the city council chambers. At this point in time, it just doesn't seem like indoor meetings with potentially large groups of people is going to be appropriate in the near term. And we've also always wanted to avoid the kind of the seesaw of coming back together and then having to go back into online and then back in person again. So we're trying to avoid that. And so it seems right now that January is probably a good target to hope that we'd be able to reconvene in person. We'll be sure to continue to provide updates at these council meetings and through all of our other communication channels. The main part, though, of the city manager report that I wanted to use the time for tonight is on a couple of recent wildfires that impacted San Rafael and neighboring communities. The San Rafael Hill fire last month, and then the Marinwood Open Space kind of near Mount Lassen Drive area about a week and a half ago. So again, just as a reminder, the city manager report isn't intended to be a discussion item on any particular topic, but we can kind of provide some information about things that are important in the community, and certainly this topic has been on the forefront of our minds during the current drought and fire season. So I've asked Battalion Chief Matt Windrum if he could turn on his camera to talk briefly about the fires just for a few minutes. It's not intended to be a long item. And then also, I know Quinn Gardner is here, assisted by Kate Anderson, to talk just for another couple, few minutes on how the work of the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority relates to these kind of vegetation fires that we're seeing and how that work sets us up for more success. I'll start it off with Battalion Chief Matt Windrum. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks, Mayor Kate, and members of the council for having me this evening. Just a little bit of an update on these fires and some of the background. The San Rafael Hill fire, as I think everyone's aware, started late in the evening on August 16th. The initial first calls into our sheriff's communication center were actually from a law enforcement officer driving southbound on the freeway who saw it up on the hill. Soon thereafter, there were multiple 911 callers, and that officer and others started up that way to try to locate the fire. As often happens, especially fires at night, they are very impressive. That one was particularly visible from the freeway and from places to the east side of the freeway. And so there were people thinking that was in a lot of different locations. But our crews got to the end of Graceland Drive in about, the initial crews, about eight minutes from the first 911 call and located the fire a few hundred feet up in a small draw there on the slopes of San Rafael Hill off of Graceland with primary access there. We did have some crews that made access up the Robert Dollar Fire Road and made an attack on the fire from the top, basically. Some of those initial law enforcement officers who responded to, you know, who saw the fire and then responded when the call came in, they started to do some notification and evacuation of residents at the end of Graceland. By the time we got up there, that was already somewhat in process, and our crews were focused on the fire itself. The fire ended up being about two and a half acres. It made it up to the top of the Robert Dollar Fire Road there near the end of Chula Vista Drive. But we never did actually, once we established our command structure and were working with the police department, we never issued official evacuation notices to anybody there. That had been kind of done through some independent, well-meaning action of those first arriving officers who were ahead of us, being that they were on the road and saw it when it was just stardom. There was some messaging out via NICSOL a little bit later on from San Rafael advising that there were no official evacuations, and then a little bit later allowing, giving folks notice that they could return back. You know, like I said, the fire was a total of about two and a half acres. It's still an active investigation. However, we can eliminate any sort of natural causes for the fire, and there are no PGE power lines or anything like that. So we're looking at it as a human-caused fire of some type. There's a number of walking trails and things in that area that are used by a number of folks in the area. So the police department has an active investigation going on that fire. About two weeks later, we had what was dubbed the Mount Lassen Fire, reported off the end of Mount Lassen Drive behind some structures in the area of Jeanette Prandy Way, which is out in Lucas Valley. There are some county facilities out there and Rotary senior housing development. When our crews from, the first engine was from Marinwood arrived out there, it was already two to three acres, and it's moving up the Big Rock Ridge, really assisted by the topography of fire burns much better uphill than down and a little bit of a prevailing afternoon wind. And the fire went up the ridge all the way to the top, impacting the Queenstone Fire Road that runs along the top of Big Rock Ridge. There were evacuations ordered there in a portion of Marinwood along Idleberry Road, essentially from the Mount Lassen area east to Miller Creek. Those were put under evacuation order. In this case, because it was in the county, the Marin County Sheriff's was the lead law enforcement agency. They were assisted by San Rafael Police and CHP in, you know, conducting the evacuations. And they were also handling the communications and the notifications through the Marin County Office of Emergency Services. Luckily, with the fire burning uphill, it was really burning away from the homes. The fire ended up being about 45 acres. We had a significant response. It's in an area that that side of the ridge is what's called state responsibility area. So the jurisdiction for wildland fires there lies with Marin County Fire and the state of California. So we kind of become an assisting agency, although we had essentially all of our resources from San Rafael there through most of the day and into the evening. But we had four air tankers from CAL FIRE, two helicopters, numerous other equipment. But in the illustration of what, how stripped resources are throughout the state, given the other fires going on, we had resources coming all the way from Mendocino County in that initial request of resources, just because of the, and a lot of local resources from Sonoma County. We kept crews between ourselves and Marin County Fire. Crews were out there for a couple of days, continuing to mop up and ensure that the fire was fully out. And the cause there determined by Marin County Fire was mowing equipment behind some, in the grassy open space behind some structures there. And so it's a very timely reminder, the importance of doing your vegetation management, but doing it in the right way. And if you're going to be mowing, mow before 10 o'clock on a foggy morning, and which is great, you know, because it's not too hot then anyways. But that's the take-home message on that. So that's kind of the operational update on those fires.
And also a great segue to Quinn Gardner.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, chief. Good evening, Mayor, council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak a little bit. I think one of, I mean, the first thing obviously is I'm not one of the people on the ground fighting the fire or running evacuations. And so I just need to thank all of those first responders, our first responders. all of those first responders, our firefighters, our partners across the county, our law enforcement partners across the county. Certainly, every incident is an opportunity to learn and improve. And I think this is an opportunity to provide some updates on some of those things as well as the positive impacts we've seen since the MWPA. But really, overall, just both of those fires were contained without damage to homes and injury, and that's the ultimate goal. So just really want to start by thanking and acknowledging that. I think to Chief Windrum's point, I think it's really important that council and the community understand that, you know, any fire of any size, even though it's contained, like there are crews on for days on end. And so I think after the last one, we saw a flare up the next day. There were crews that spent the night on the hill. And just again, appreciative of their efforts, but also that this isn't, we do take these very seriously and it's an ongoing process and it's not just a, okay, we put this out and we leave peace. I think the really fascinating thing about the Graceland Fire, the fire on San Rafael Hill, was that that was in an area that we've treated recently for fuel reduction work. So specifically that Robert Dollar Fire Road has been essentially turned into a shaded fuel break. And what that means is we remove a lot of the ground and ladder fuels, which helps keep the fire on the ground. It's a very similar tactic that we're asking all of our property owners to do on their own home to achieve defensible space. But over the last couple of years, we've put in a lot of work in that area. We've also put in area work closer to homes in that area and finished Phase One, I think, two weeks before that fire. And Phase Two of that project, we're actually getting started here in the next couple of weeks to make sure that we've really treated that entire kind of southeastern portion of San Rafael Hill on the area that's the city's responsibility that abuts private parcels. In addition, San Rafael Lincoln Hill, partly because of its ignition history, has also been our initial focus for roadside vegetation clearance and our installation of parking boxes, which I believe starts tomorrow. I just got back from a couple of days off, so I could be off a few days. So but we're really excited to see all those evacuation improvements underway. And that's all thanks to Measure C in the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority and the taxpayers' support of that. And that's also us seeing our action plan getting completed. You know, we started with that 38-point action plan a couple of years ago as kind of a wish list. And we are now checking things off and have the funding to do it. And so even talking to some of the suppression crews after the Hill Fire, the work that was done made a difference. It helped slow the fire. It helped give us firefighters a chance. And that's a lot of what those shaded fuel breaks really focus on. And Lucas Valley, on the side of the close store that the Mount Lassen Fire was, is also a planned project area. And so very similar treatment plan in terms of going up above the homes and creating that defensible space and shaded fuel break within 100 feet of structures. So that is in the, I think we just are either mid-process in environmental compliance or working through that and then we'll move into contracting. If you need the specific details, Kate Anderson's also on the line. She's our lead veg management specialist on all of our open space projects. We're super lucky to have her. She's also a professional forester. So really a great blend in understanding that land management aspect as well as the fire risk. And so the last couple of things I just want to touch on is alerting and how important it is that everyone has signed up for emergency alerts. We, you know, we heard some community feedback after the San Rafael Hill Fire and I hope the Mount Lassen Fire demonstrated some of the changes and additional alerts, the general feedback. And it's always a balance. We don't want to over-message because we don't want people to get numb to our alerting and we don't want people to unsubscribe. But we also understand people want information. And so specifically for the Mount Lassen Fire, that was a county-managed incident. Those evacuations were county decisions. I think one of the things all residents, of course, should be prepared for is being prepared to evacuate if you're asked to do so. If at any point you feel unsafe, evacuation's always a possibility. But we are going to, in general, probably you're going to see a lot of airing on the side of evacuating ahead of time or over-evacuating, what might feel like that, because A, it gets people out and it keeps people safe, but it also then clears up the roads. And then if something happens, we're not in a really bad situation. And I totally recognize that and everybody making those decisions knows it's tough and we're asking people to leave their homes for hopefully only a few hours. But at the end of the day, we've seen a lot of lives saved that way. But the other important thing, too, is to understand the value of defensible space. And to Chief Windrum's point, once the crews were able to really understand where the fire was on San Rafael Hill and understand that it was burning up and away from structures and they were going to be able to get it with the conditions, that, you know, evacuations aren't necessarily always the safest thing when you're dealing with narrow roads and if we can provide structural protection. So I know the community really wants black and white answers on some of this. I know it's tricky, but I can't say, speak highly enough for the professionals we have making those decisions and informing the public through our emergency alerting system. So as always, text your zip code to 888-777. And if you want to be signed up for multiple alerts, you can text multiple zip codes. So you can do 94901, you can do 903, and if you want Navado's or Southern Marin or anyone else, text that. And then the big one is Alert Marin. And you do need to go online and register for Alert Marin, but you do that by an address and that way we can do geo-boxes. And so when there are evacuation orders or warnings, you're getting messages based on your address that you've entered into the system and it's much more specific than NICSOL, which is only by zip code. So I think those are all my main talking points, but if there's anything else, happy to address it.
Thanks, Quinn and Kate. Appreciate that also. Chief Windrum, we were trying to keep this as brief and informational. So we'll stop there, but I just wanted to ask Quinn, for people that are listening that have more questions, I believe we have a wildfire safety forum coming up on September 22nd at 6:00 PM. Is that still in the works, Quinn?
That is very much the plan. Kate and I were just chatting about it this afternoon. So that's a, thanks, Jim. It's going to be a great opportunity. We'll provide some updates on more specifics about the project. So if you want to know what we're thinking about in your neck of the woods, join that. We're going to provide those details. And then we'll also, the goal with that is also to help the public understand what to expect from the city during disasters, specifically, of course, in this case wildfire. But it is National Preparedness Month, so there's also some get-ready classes and all sorts of good stuff happening this month that are all on the city's event page.
Great. Thank you. And I appreciate the little extra time. Those were two important community incidents that were going on. Just wanted to make sure that people were aware of them and know how to participate going forward. So thanks so much for the staff that participated and I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Kate.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Matt, Quinn and Kate. That was important that our community have that update. So thank you so much. The next time is Councilmember Reports and we haven't seen each other for a while, but hit the high notes. Maybe not every meeting, but let's share what you've been up to. I'll start with you, Vice Mayor.
Just a couple of quick high notes. On the San Rafael Sanitation District Board, Matt, we received a report from our outside consultant with some ideas for operational improvements. And the board was so taken with the ideas that we've scheduled a strategic workshop to come up with specific plans that we can put in place that will set the stage for additional use of recycled water through the CMSA, as well as perhaps set the stage for some additional collaboration with our joint joint venture partners in the, no, Joint Power Agency. It's not a joint venture, sorry, day job. With our JP, our fellow JPA members. I'm also continuing to work with the Locklom and Development Oversight Committee as we enter the next phase of development on that site. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. In August, I had the opportunity to tour the Marin sanitary service facility on Anderson Drive. I was able to observe the massive sorting operation there. Think all of the paper and cardboard and plastics, cans, glass and landfill. This moves through that facility in massive quantities on a weekly basis, a daily basis during the week. Involves a large number of people to inspect and sort as things move through conveyors. So as we continue our sustainability journey, there are so many opportunities for us to make a difference in eliminating and reducing plastics, recoverabilities of recyclables and better management of our organics, especially with SB 1383. Everybody keep here, will keep hearing about that more intensely as the deadline comes up in early next year. So I'm looking forward to adopting policies that are environmentally sustainable and also financially sustainable. So that was a really wonderful tour and I hope we get to get the word out more as we approach, I would say, a next milestone of 1383.
Thank you. Councilmember Mica.
Hello, everybody. And yeah, it's been definitely very busy. So some of the highlights. We hosted our climate action plan in August. And Quinn mentioned that she wasn't like hands-on, like right there with the fire, but she is everywhere, informing everybody around how to be protected. I personally did all the Cypress's and everything in my house as well. So it really makes a difference. I really appreciate Quinn and everybody in the fire department and it's amazing how effective that was. So I also wanted to congratulate us and to, you know, for receiving the 2021 Beacon Spotlight Award. We did the Platinum Level Award for 27% community greenhouse gas reductions. So huge thank you to Cory and the staff at the City of San Rafael, our community and for how much our residents and the businesses do in addition to marine clean energy. So that's awesome. And we still have a lot of ways to go, but it's definitely a very proud moment. Let's see, I was part of the Facebook Live Forum in Spanish around the render protections. So huge thank you to Cana Alliance for organizing it with Legal Aid of Marine and especially to our staff and the county for a great community event. We also have Safe Routes to School with some of the improvements. There's so much happening right now around the schools. And like Coleman Walk, Audi Report, we have like a looking at the Las Galinas and Las Colindas intersection stop signs, looking at Laureldale and Davidson, some of the issues there. So there is also lots of things going on. And then I would just finish, there's much more, but I'll finish by saying that yesterday I had the honor to host the Watemalán Independence Day and on behalf of the City of San Rafael outside the city hall. And I was there with the consulate of Guatemala in the Bay Area, Solidaridad Guatemalteca, and many of our beautiful neighbors. And honestly, I cannot hope for a better way to enter the Hispanic Heritage Month this week. So that's my report for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And on the Beacon Award, I just have to say Councilmember Hill will be attending the Lake of California Cities Conference. He will receive it in person. We hope that will be well photographed and then at a future meeting, he will present it to the rest of us. So stay tuned for that. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. Good to see everybody. And I'm not in a car this month, so that's nice. The county is embarking on their annual process for the scheduling of the, I guess, it's called Continuum of Care. And it's where many of the agencies in Marin are able to apply for grants in terms of support for housing and services for homeless households. And so they do have the funds and I'll be serving on the review and rank panel in reviewing those applications. So work is underway to start that process over the next month or so. So that will be, I'll be reporting back and we'll be having more information about that as we go forward. Quinn and San Rafael Fire Department, the county, you know, we heard a lot of information, but the community was very, very appreciative by all the alerts, the messaging and the communication that was going on. So huge round of thanks to everybody for that. I know you shared a lot of information, but what wasn't shared was the amount of community outpouring of thanks that came through from many in this area and to both San Rafael Fire Department and to Marinwood as well. It was a great thing that was going on. And then I also wanted to mention the work that's happening with Director O'Leary with the Economic Development Group. The dining under the lights is slowly coming to an end as we start approaching the end of the season. And so that will be happening over the next couple of weeks. I believe we'll at least go to the end of September. And so work is happening there and then also work is happening on additional focus groups and talking to our business community. So looking forward and thanks to the participation with the chamber for helping to lead those activities.
Thank you so much. Today I attended the Marin Transit Meeting. We had a discussion about the Marin Access Contract, which was awarded to TransDev. It had been held by Vivilon. There was a lot of public comment and discussion about that. SMART, speaking with the transit theme, I participated on interview panels. So SMART's in the process of hiring a general manager. And hopefully there'll be a community communication about that. I will say that all the applicants were unbelievably amazing people. So SMART will be in good hands after Farhad resigns. So thank you on that. And then, let me see what else. Gun Safety Collaborative. So I've talked about that before. That is a group that is convened by the DA's office. Finished a successful campaign around providing gun locks, handed out both through government agency as well as community-based organization. So with that one wrapping up, we talked about suicide prevention, which we will also talk about later on this evening. And then the other item is a buyback program sometime later in the fall. And then finally, BayWave, which is the coalition of several jurisdictions, but most importantly, the county around sea level rise. How do we stay on the same page? How do we talk about mitigation adaptation, being that we share a coastline? So those conversations are going on. BayAdapt had a workshop two weeks ago. You can find it on the BCDC website and see all the slides and really just talking about almost the big regional efforts around that. And then finally, this was not something I participated in, but I want to give a shout out to our incredible staff. We already know we have incredible staff and Councilmember Mica alluded to this. We found out through our canal policy working groups that homeowners or renters in the canal area were not aware of the rental protections that were in place for them right now. So the people that were living in the canal were being told things by their landlords that weren't accurate and people didn't know their rights. So I'm really proud of our staff. They took it upon themselves. They created a flyer and physically went out over several days and handed out the flyer where people already were. They were bilingual speakers. So I want to give a specific shout out to Lydia K. Macedo, Walter Gonzalez and Ana Santiago. Hopefully I didn't miss any, but again, they stepped, they saw a need and they stepped it and they made it happen. And what we heard was it was really well-received and people did not know what their rights were. So very grateful to them. Okay, so with that, we have finished Councilmember Reports. We will move on to the consent calendar. I'll ask my colleagues if there are any items that you would like to be held from the consent calendar. Okay, not seen any. I will open public comment on any of the items that is on the upcoming consent calendar.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If you're commenting by phone, please press star nine. And once you've heard the notification, the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment and then they will be muted once time has elapsed. As a reminder, please speak slowly to allow our interpreter to effectively express your comments. And again, this is for items on the consent calendar. And I do have a speaker.
Yeah, Ava Crisanti, I have questions about the propriety of an additional $282,000 for unmarked vehicles for your police department. I'm looking at how your police department staffer Lynn Murphy is totally uncredentialed to run an open-air jail as she is doing underneath the freeway overpass for unhoused individuals. Just looking at the incompetence of that operation and the cruelty, I don't, it's not clear to me why you need $282,000 for new unmarked vehicles. You know, the police are perfectly capable of going down to the store and getting donuts in their old unmarked vehicles. So there's no need to get new unmarked vehicles. Further, you should be learning to do more with less. And you should not have police running around in unmarked vehicles in the first place. You know, they need to be out of their cars. They need to be interacting in a humane manner with the residents. And that's exactly the opposite of what we've seen. And I would point to, I don't know if you've been down to the open-air jail slash internment camp that Murphy is running, but they've put black mesh over the chain link fence so that people can't see just how bad the camp is. It's really grisly. And they're not letting people in that camp have any sort of cooking appliance, not so much as an electric tea kettle. And the black mesh is a problem. And the black mesh is a problem. So it looks like at the same time that you're trying to hide what your police department is doing using Lynn Murphy, you are also insisting that you deserve nearly $300,000 for unmarked vehicles. You need more transparency.
I see no other hands raised, but I will give everyone a few seconds to raise their hand. Once again, you can use the raise hand feature or press star nine if you've dialed in. I see no further public comment on the consent calendar.
Okay, I will bring it back to the council for a motion.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Great, moved in second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Maria Ranz, Galati. Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries by zero.
If I may, Mayor Kate, at this point, I'm going to toggle our interpreters.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Charles and.
Alejandro.
Alejandro, we will welcome Alejandro. Thank you.
And I'll let you know when we're ready, Mayor Kate. We're ready.
Thank you. Welcome, Alejandro. Thank you for providing the translation. So the next item on our agenda is an update, a report on the 2021-22 city council redistricting process. I see Chris Ginnell has joined us and I will turn it to you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Oh, see, I actually did unmute myself for a change. Thank you for having me back this evening. It's a pleasure to be with you. When we, when I was here with the council in July, we started talking the very preliminary steps about the redistricting of the city council districts. And at the time, we talked mostly about the process and the timeline and what it would look like. Understanding though, that we were in a bit of a holding pattern because the census data that we were relying on were still unclear. And it was uncertain at the time when they would be available. So we, you know, touched very, very briefly on the rules. But the purpose of this evening's presentation is now we have some additional information. The Census Bureau released the initial tranche of its data in August. The state is still working on making some adjustments. I'll talk a little bit about that. But what I'd like to do this evening is share with you those initial demographics that kind of give us an idea of which direction we're headed in terms of the lines. And then talk a little bit more detail about the rules of how those lines get adjusted, what sorts of things get taken into account in the process. And so I thought I would start though, very briefly, I'm going to share my screen here. Just very briefly with a little bit of a recap of the timeline and the process that we're going to be going through. We talked about these, as I said, in July, so I won't spend a lot of time on them, but happy to answer questions about them. As I said, the Census Bureau released its initial batch of data in August. These are the data that the Bureau releases every 10 years following the census. Usually they let them out in, supposed to be by the end of March. Sometimes they're early, often they're early in February. But this time because of the pandemic, you know, it disrupted everything else. Why not this? So we were about four and a half months after the statutory deadline that Congress sent forth. Related to that, some changes to state law in September also required that the California statewide database at UC Berkeley take those census data and make some adjustments to them. We'll talk a little bit more about what those look like. But they are currently in the process of making those adjustments right now. Says here that the late September is the anticipated release date. We got some additional information after this PowerPoint was put together that they are proposing or expecting to release those data a week from today, on September 20th. So and then once those data are released, then the demographer will be able to take them and process them, get them into the system, and that will really be sort of the starting gun, if you will, in the process. The other end of the timeline, we're looking at an April 17 hard fast legal deadline to get it finished. But we're targeting a March 21 completion date because we like to build in a little bit of a cushion, partly because we want to have an extra meeting or two in case something, you know, comes up and we need some extra time. But also because if we can, we like to give the elections departments some wiggle room. You know, once these lines are adopted, any changes that are made, they have to take them, they have to import them, they have to make them work, reassign the voters, you know, and all of those, those various mechanical steps. And so as much time as they can have, they're going to appreciate. And so we've proposed basically five, five meetings. State law requires that there be four public hearings as opposed to just a meeting. And so what we're doing this evening is sort of a preliminary meeting, just informational. And then the four hearings we're proposing for November 8, January 18, February 21, and March 21. And the November meeting will be really more to get input from you and from the public about communities of interest, which we'll talk a little bit about. And criteria, sort of instructions and guidance for what we should be thinking about when we're redrawing lines. And then the other meetings will really be more about kind of, you know, these are the lines that we're looking at and we want your feedback on them. So there will be lines on the map at that point. And then, as I said, March 21 is when we're proposing the sort of final adoption. Last little process point, just to recap from last time. As this process goes forward, you know, it doesn't cut any of the current members of the council's term short. The way it works is as the new lines are implemented, they sort of roll in as one council member's term ends. Then their district comes up for election and they have to run in whatever district they live in. And so if they, it's changed, then they run in the changed district. If they're no longer, you know, in their district, you know, heaven forbid, then they have to run in the new district, et cetera. But, but the long story short is all of the current terms follow through to completion at the end. So that's, as I said, a brief recap of the process and the timing. What I really want to talk about with you this evening is the rules. You know, what do we look at? What rules do we, or what considerations do we ask you to take into account as you guide us and as the demographer brings forth proposals for your consideration? And the way it works is.
Can you maybe speak a little slower?
I can. And I apologize to our.
It's okay. You were getting, you were getting to the good stuff, so you were speeding up.
Yes, I apologize. The way the rules work is federal law sets some outer boundaries. You know, they set the equal population guidelines and also the rules governing consideration of race and ethnicity and protection of minority voting rights. Within those outer boundaries, then state law pretty much provides the rest of the rules. And traditionally, including when we did this three or four years ago, council had a whole lot of discretion, pretty much unbounded discretion within those federal rules to decide what made sense in terms of representation and in terms of policy decisions. In 2019, the legislature changed all of that. And it set down four specific rules and said, you need to, in considering these lines, take these criteria, these four criteria into account, and you need to take them into account in this specific order. The first being geographic contiguity, pretty, pretty obvious, you know, what that is. Just that the districts not skip around, that they, you'd be able to move from one part of it to another without leaving the district. Second, that the districts minimize the division of neighborhoods and communities of interest to the extent possible. And, you know, that, we'll talk about what that means because communities of, you know, neighborhoods are pretty straightforward. Communities of interest is a little bit more subjective and undefined. And so we'll, we'll talk about what that means. The third most important consideration is identifying easily identifiable boundaries. So major roads, highway 101, the canal, things that people can look at and understand as obvious boundaries for districts. And then finally, the compactness of the population in the district. You don't bypass population nearby to go grab population far away in your district, unless you're complying with one of the higher ranked criteria. And then when, after complying with those statutory criteria, there's still potentially a limited role for some other traditional criteria that the courts have historically deemed to be legitimate, provided that they don't then require the violation of any of those statutory criteria. And some of those traditional criteria haven't been a policy in favor of keeping current council members within their districts. And not related to that, minimizing the number of voters who switch from one election cycle to the other. Understanding that, you know, if you move from one to the other, you might get to vote twice in a row. But then again, you might end up skipping an election. Also potentially future, future growth, although probably less of an issue in San Rafael. And, but as I said, these are really things that you would only take into account, provided you can do so without violating any of those four statutory criteria. So I want to talk a little bit about each of these rules to flesh them out just briefly. As I said, the most important rules are the federal ones. And the most important federal rule is the equal population requirement. It's why we do this every 10 years, to comply with the constitution and subsequent statutes to implement it. What the courts have said is that the districts don't have to be perfectly equal in, in population, but they need to be substantially equal. And the way that's been interpreted over the years is a planned deviation that is less than 10%. And we'll explain what that means, is presumptively legitimate and valid constitutional. That doesn't mean that if you're within the 10%, it could never be challenged, but it's very unusual and very difficult. And so the way we calculate that is we take the total population of the city. And I should say that these numbers are just illustrative. They're not San Rafael's numbers. But take the total population of the city and divide by the number of seats. So in this example, it's five. In the case of San Rafael, it would be four council seats. And that gives us an ideal number. And then we take the difference between the largest and the smallest districts, figure out what that difference is. And that's our deviation range. We divide that by the ideal number and that gives us the total deviation. And so that's that, that number there in the pink circle, that percentage that needs to be under 10% to comply with the equal population rules. And so, oh, and the slight adjustment, I mentioned that this California statewide database is making some changes under state law that was adopted in 2019. The statewide database basically takes the prisoners that are incarcerated in federal and state prisons and redistributes them back to their last known place of residence. So, you know, there are no prisons within the city's boundary, so it shouldn't affect it that way. But there may be a handful of people here and there that get redistributed back to their last known residence, potentially. Probably not a big effect in this case. But the preliminary numbers that we have, these are the unadjusted numbers from the Census Bureau. So these don't include the adjustments from the statewide database because they're not out yet. But as I said, we're not anticipating that it'll have a whole lot of an impact under the circumstances. And what we see is that the city is bumping right up against that 10% number. Most of that is being driven by districts three and four. District four is about 5% overpopulated compared to the ideal 15,318 people. And district three is just about 5% underpopulated. And so there's going to need to be some probably changes to the districts to rebalance that population. And most of it will be between those two districts to balance them out. The other two districts are quite a bit closer to even population. Within the equal population guideline, the second most important rules are the protection of minority voting rights, specifically the Federal Voting Rights Act, which prohibits any electoral system that would limit the opportunity for minority voters to have an equal opportunity to elect candidates of their choice. And that includes the racial groups that you identify as you mark the boxes on the census. Also includes language minorities, which is significant in California generally, San Rafael in particular, because it includes Spanish-speaking citizens. And what the court has said is that the Voting Rights Act may require particular districts to be drawn if you can draw a majority of citizen voting age population. So eligible voters that are members of that, that racial group. Relatedly though, the court has said that in doing that, you, you don't just ignore everything else and make race the single one and only focus. Race is a, it's a consideration in the mix, but it can't predominate over everything else, including normal traditional rules like compactness and, you know, continuity and all of those things. So the, the bottom line is really to focus on communities of interest, unless it's absolutely required by the Voting Rights Act to draw a particular district. In San Rafael, we're not talking about a Voting Rights Act requirement because it's, there are no districts that are anywhere close to 50%. So, you know, that, that rule about focusing on communities of interest is really the one to take away from this because, and we did that when we drew these lines initially. I mean, there were a focus on, on the characteristics of the communities within each of these districts, not just the racial demographics. And then, as I said, we, you know, within those limits, we focus on the state boundaries. And we know, contiguity again is pretty straightforward. What I do want to talk briefly about is the communities of interest criterion. Because as I said, it's not very clear in some cases what that means. State law defines community of interest as a population that shares common social or economic interests that should be included within a single district for purposes of its fair and effective representation. So in putting that, that sort of into mechanical terms, you know, what does it functionally mean? It means it's got to be, they have to have a common social and economic interest. Has to have some connection to the city policies. You know, someone comes in and says, hey, we have a common interest in, you know, state parks. Well, that's great, but San Rafael doesn't, you know, make decisions about state parks. So it really should be something that's connected to the city and the city council. It needs to be geographically defined and described. You know, you can have a community of interest, but if it's not in a single area of town, there's no way to necessarily include it within a single council district. And then it's got to be one that benefits from being in a single district. You know, sometimes there are interests that would prefer to be split between multiple districts. You know, we see this sometimes with retirement, larger retirement communities, where they would rather be in multiple districts, so they have multiple council members that they can talk with. And so we're going to be looking for, for feedback on, on communities of interest from you. You know, it's, it's a very subjective notion, a community of interest. And it varies by the jurisdiction. You know, what is a community of interest in San Rafael might not necessarily be a community of interest in other parts of even Marin County, much less other parts of the state. The one caveat is it is not a community of interest, a community of interest can't be defined with reference to political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. And so, you know, what are we looking for in terms of the, the interests that would define a community of interest? It can be very broad. It could be lifestyle, so community character, you know, maybe parks, as I said, or economic considerations like an industry in a certain area, you know, the people who are employed by that industry. It can be demographic interests, although you see I have the asterisk for race, which we talked about. Could be geographic, you know, you know, people who live up by, since there's been talk about it already this evening, up by the ridges where wildfires are more of a concern, may have a community of interest. Planning areas may be a community of interest, that sort of thing. It's very broad and as I said, it, it can be very subjective. You know, my, one of my favorite examples was in Phoenix 10 years ago. A bunch of folks came in and said, you know, hey, we own these, these historic brick houses in downtown Phoenix. We think it is important how you treat them in the planning code, so we all want to be kept together in one district. That was their community of interest and the council kept it to district. You know, it's probably not the same here, but it gives you an idea of how, how broad it can be or how, how varied. I'm not going to walk through all of these, but this is another example. These are communities of interest that were identified by the state redistricting commission 10 years ago. And again, they give you a sense of how, how broad an idea this concept can be. And so all of that is a long way of getting to my real point, which is we're going to be looking for feedback primarily from the public, but also from you about what are the communities of interest that should be taken into account in this process? You know, we can look at the, the underlying demographics of the neighborhood. We can look at planning maps and that sort of thing. But the best way to figure this out is really for you to tell us. Because you're going to know the community better than anybody else and the public will know that. And so we're looking for that testimony. So, you know, with respect to the public comment tonight, but then again, as I said, we're coming back in November to discuss this issue once again, you know, people then will have had some time to think about it and provide that sort of feedback. And then, once we've got that feedback, then that's something that the demographer can take into account. And then, once we've got that feedback, then that's something that the demographer can take into account in drawing their initial proposals that they bring back at the subsequent meeting. And as I said, the, you know, within those state law boundaries, then there are also these traditional considerations that may play a role, assuming that that they fit within those those statutory criteria. And so I know I've rambled on a little bit of length and probably too quickly again. But I'm happy to answer questions or about any part of it, the criteria, the timeline, any of it.
Thank you, I'm sure there will be questions, I'll start with the vice mayor.
Thank you. My question is about where we are now. We've, you presented all these broad, you know, overarching concepts. But we're down at the at the preliminary numbers, which may be adjusted on for based on the factors that you stated. So what we know now is that two out of four districts are within a percentage point or so of on of of each other. There are two districts, one has gone up and the other has gone down. Fortunately, they're adjacent to each other, contiguous. Thus suggesting that, you know, a minor adjustment could get us even more below the 10, the magic 10% number. So I'm I'm wondering, your presentation was very expansive. And my sense is that the issue before us is actually fairly narrow. We're we're not going to start all over again and look at communities of interest, we just need to wiggle around a little bit to get to get our numbers better in line. Is is that where we are or are we starting over again?
Well, a little both. It is very possible that when all is said and done, that's where we're going to end up. That that that, and I say that because I was involved when these districts are drawn. And so it it is the case that these districts were drawn with those communities of interest in mind already. And so I I think it's very likely that when we get public comment and when all of the the process has gone through, that we're going to find that those districts still make a whole lot of sense. And they still take into account those communities of interest in the city. So it really is very, very, I think, I may even say likely, that what we're talking about is a a boundary adjustment between three and four. That said, I do think, given the changes in state law and the way the the elections code reads, I do think we still need to go through the process of of getting that that commentary and confirming that that's the case from the public. So, you know, it it seems like a lot of a lot of hearings for a minor boundary change, and I I tend to agree with you. But I I think we still need to to create that record and be sure that and confirm that that these districts really do still reflect those communities and the the appropriate communities.
So we're open to input that there should be bigger adjustments, but numerically, a solution is suggested.
Right, there there's no, it's not inevitable that there will be big changes, certainly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill, do you have any questions?
Yes, in the presentation in the packet, there was a a caution after you wrote total deviation less than 10% presumptively constitutional, but caution the presumption presumption can be overcome. Can you cite a couple of examples that might be similar to Santa fell where we would still? Because it does look like we're on the cusp and there might be reasons, but it wasn't explicitly indicated what might kind of draw us to 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 make changes, even if we're presumptively constitutional.
Yeah, yeah, so. An example like Santa fell, no. As I said, it's they're pretty unusual cases. They tend to, basically what they boil down to is the courts have decided that in there are cases where the reason for the deviation, even though it's within 10%, wasn't really appropriate. So kind of the leading case was the state of Georgia drew their lines, they were 9.98%. And they were that wide because they wanted to overpopulate all the Republican districts and underpopulate all the Democratic ones. The court said, yeah, favoring one party like that's not really legitimate, even though you're within that 10%. The broader rule is basically if the if the population deviation exists for a legitimate policy governmental reason, then it's fine. And the burden is going to be on somebody challenging it within that 10% to show that it's not legitimate, it's not appropriate. So I I put that caveat in there because it used to be that some people would talk about it as a safe harbor. It's not technically a safe harbor, it is, it's pretty close in most cases.
So my guess, my follow up based on what you said, would that mean that we would want to very carefully try to indicate political party affiliation in the districts to show that we're not even intentionally or even accidentally showing any any favoritism toward one party?
No, I don't think so, because I think the fact that you don't have politi- political data in the database to begin with, you're not open to that complaint, and these are nonpartisan offices. And also, the, as I said, the state law says, communities of interest, you really, you shouldn't be taking political parties into account. So I don't think that's really a consideration. I I I think in this case, to the extent there's any concern, it would be that you not the my concern is that it's 9.97, right, assuming that the adjusted data come out there. I think it's a good idea to have a little bit of a cushion, just given that there's a little bit of variation in the census data itself. Just so you can, you know, you don't want to push right up against the line. But beyond that, I think the considerations that the legislature has prescribed and that we took into account last time, those are all legitimate considerations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mica, do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation, it just seems like yesterday that I was watching the the council going into this through the elections. And we were on the school board doing the same thing. Just a clarifying question, you mentioned that some of the council members that they will go into election in 2020. Sorry, that they might do it in on 2024. And thus, so that means that all the council members are going to go to election together?
Oh, no, I'm sorry if I was, it was confusing. I I was talking about voters who might switch from one election cycle to another. So if if I live in district two and I'm supposed to vote in 2022, but I get moved to a different district, I might skip, but the council members' election cycles will not change.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz.
Yeah, thank you for the updates. In terms of the estimated populations compared to what it was the prior census or the data that you used for the original distribution, what are we seeing? Because I know there was so much work that was done to get to increase our numbers in terms of census, turning in the census. I'm not surprised district four jumped up higher based on the correlation of other factors of education, homeownership, other things. And I'm wondering if we're seeing, if this feels right, based on what we sort of know. I mean, I think that's also something we have to take into consideration. I know we have to use the data, but I go back and forth, like, it's not surprising, because I mean, the people who were really receptive to that information about submitting the census. You know, if you look at some of the other things that correlate to turning in the census.
Yeah, so I'm I'm not ignoring you, I'm seeing if I
No, I know, I've been trying to find the right site as well to look to see, so I thought maybe
Yeah. Yeah, I I don't have the, I have the map, but I don't have the the demographics, I'd have to look. I I was put, I would, I'm not shocked by by the the variation. I mean, 4% and 5% is not remotely unusual. We're we're seeing jurisdictions all up and down the state where they're having they're having deviations in the 20s and 30s, because they have districts that are 10 and 15% over or underpopulated. So, you know, given that Marin generally is is a more settled population and not is slower growth, I would have, you know, I wouldn't necessarily have guessed that it would get to 10%, but I'm not shocked by it. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't seem particularly unusual to me. I guess is is what I would say. And it, to your point, though, it it is hard to know the impact of all of the craziness of the last year on who responded, who didn't. But, you know, Marin does tend to be a pretty high response area, too. And, you know, district three is the the most underpopulated. Which I wouldn't necessarily have expected.
Thank you. Thank you, I have a similar question, if you remember, what was the deviation number when the maps were drawn three years ago?
I want to say it was somewhere in the fours, if I recall correctly.
Okay, I do remember having a conversation about it, I just couldn't remember where where we ended up.
Yeah, I would have to see if I can, oh, no, here we go. 5.36 was the deviation when we did it last time, but that was based on 2010 census data.
No, I know, I think we were, I was just trying to put that in in context. Very tactical question, so when we did this just three years ago, we all had a great time doing the sample maps, and I know you spent a lot of time talking about the community of interest, and people can give input on that tonight and at future meetings. But the sample map online tool, so how does that fit in? When did people get to get unleashed and start moving line or whatever it is they want to do?
Yeah, so I I should have mentioned, we are in the process, the the demographer, national demographics, same same folks who worked on it last time, of putting together a dedicated website for the city of Santa fell, it's, I think it's going to be draw Santafell.org or something like that. And it will have all of the information about the redistricting process, agendas, timelines, all of that. And it will also then have the tools for people to get involved and and do that. And so we're looking at having that out in the next week or 10 days ideally. I will say that those those tools, getting the data into them has been a little bit of a chore, because they're also managed by third party vendors. So it may, you know, it, they may not be completely ready to go at the same time the website is, but but that'll be part of the rollout.
Okay, and so at the note, I'm trying to think back to your slide, so the November meeting, not the one next week, so I'll be, yep. Will there be a time where the maps are looked at or people will be looking at submissions outside the meeting on their own and giving comments, or I just, how does that process go?
Yeah, so people will be able to submit their own maps. The the initial demographer, I believe, is supposed to provide. Yeah, so we'll be coming back in January with the the proposals from the demographer. But before that time, people will be able to be playing with the the mapping tools and making their own suggestions in advance. You know, members of the council, members of the public, you name it, anybody can do it. But it's really, then, they'll all be brought in in that January meeting, along with then the the proposals from the demographer. And that'll be the first meeting where everybody kind of says, here's some, some, you know, who knows how many, 20 proposals maybe. Which ones do you like, which ones don't you like?
Okay, okay, no, that that's helpful, so thank you. Okay, any additional questions before we open up public comment? Okay, I don't see any, I'll ask the city clerk to help us out. We'd love to hear from the public on this item.
Thank you. To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature, and if you're commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment and then will be muted once time has elapsed. Additionally, please speak slowly to allow our interpreters to provide effective interpretation. I'm currently seeing no hands raised, so once again, please press star nine if you dialed in. And if you wish to provide comment through Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature.
I see no public comment. Thank you, I will close the public comment, bring it back to the council, and this is an exciting process, I don't know if there are additional comments, I'll just briefly call on my council members. I mean, this is one of many conversations, the vice mayor's like, don't call on me. No additional comments from the vice mayor? No? Councilmember Hill? Okay, Councilmember Mica? Councilmember Kurtz? Okay, yeah, and I think I I'll just say, I look forward to when we get the website up and that people can fill that out about communities of interest. But right now, there, you you've kind of outlined the process, but there's not like meat there yet to talk about.
It's been a strange year.
It has been.
A lot of wait and then hurry.
That is understatement, yes, so with that, I would entertain, let me see, a motion on this item of accepting the report?
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
A second.
Moved in second, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Maria Nans Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. Thank you mu- very much, Chris, for coming and presenting this to us. And before the interpreters leave, I did want to tag on to my earlier thanks of staff who handed out the the flyers in the canal. There were a couple names that I hadn't mentioned, and I wanted to be sure to mention them. Thomas Wong, Hector Carlos, David Garcia, and Devon Webb. They also participated with handing out those handouts, so I wanted to make sure we did that while we still had our public interpreter, our Spanish interpreter. So with that, I know the interpreter, I think, will be signing off, correct, city clerk?
That's correct.
So thank you, Alejandro, and to Charles for your service this evening. And with that, we will close this item and go to our special presentations. Thanks again, Chris.
Yeah, thank you, have a good evening.
The next item is we have two proclamations, as I had mentioned in the mayor comments, there's a lot going on in September. It's both Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, as well as Recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month. And as Quinn said, public, let's see, get ready preparation, oh, I'm butchering it, but yeah. Rachel saying, yes, get re- get ready for disaster preparation.
Emergency preparedness.
Emergency preparedness, I can't get that, thank you. But tonight, we are, I do have a a proclamation, and Nadine Atiyah Hade is going to receive this presentation, so or proclamation, so she wants to join, and I will go ahead and read. So September is known as a National Suicide Prevention Month and is intended to help raise awareness surrounding suicide prevention, resources available to the community. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone, regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control, each year, more than 48,000 people die by suicide. That is one death every 11 minutes. And whereas 90% of people who die by suicide have experienced symptoms of mental health conditions, condition, and whereas in these challenging times, education of suicide prevention and awareness is more needed than ever. Now, therefore, I, Kate Collin, Mayor Santa fell, on behalf of the council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2021 a Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and in doing so, urge all residents and community members to strive to build safe and supportive environments and eliminate the stigma surrounding mental health issues that too often prevents people from seeking the care they need. Nadine, I will turn the Zoom room to you.
Thank you, Mayor Kate and council members. I'd like to accept this proclamation on behalf of all who have suffered and died by suicide. They were never broken, they just needed help. On behalf of their loved ones, who are forever changed, and on behalf of everyone out there suffering from untreated mental health illnesses such as depression, PTSD, bipolar disorder, anxiety disorders, schizophrenia, and more. Those who suffer from emotional and physical abuse, bullying, and other traumas. Suicidal tendencies are often linked to these. Mental health illness plagues us all, and we must speak out to eliminate the stigma. To all who are hurting, I know it may not feel like it, but you are loved, your life matters, and this can get more manageable. Please don't silence your pain, please ask for help. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadine. I've asked the city clerk to put in the chat a link to additional resources. Please copy this link, share it with people that you care about, share it with your communities. So people know where to turn for resources and to get the help and support that they need. So I think that's been in the chat. So I think that's been in the chat. And we'll be sure also to make sure it's in the city manager's blog, the snapshot. So those links, actually, I think they were there, if they haven't, it's the most recent one, so thank you. I am going to open public comment on this item, and I'll ask the city clerk to join me.
Thank you. To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if commenting by phone, please press star nine. And once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment and then will be muted once time has elapsed. I currently see no hands raised, I'm going to give her one of about 10 seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you, I will close the public comment. And again, thank you, Nadine, for receiving that proclamation and your comments. Thank you. We have one more proclamation, and it's a recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month. Sylvia Gonzalez will be receiving this proclamation. So she wants to turn on her camera and I will go ahead and read it. City of San Rafael, in recognition of the Hispanic Heritage Month 2021, we celebrate this month annually from September 15th to October 15th by honoring the histories, traditions, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Latin America and Spain. And whereas Marin County and San Rafael today embrace a growing and vibrant multicultural Latino community with roots in Mexico, Central and South America, the Caribbean, and Spain. With many Spanish names still gracing our city, including San Rafael, Terolinda, Las Galinas, Santa Venetia, and San Pedro. And whereas, over 30% of the population of San Rafael is of Hispanic, Latino, and indigenous descent. And these residents contribute to the economic, cultural, and historic fabric of our city. And whereas, over 20% of City of San Rafael employees have Hispanic heritage and they contribute to the strength and diversity of the overall city workforce. And whereas, it is important to increase Hispanic cultural awareness and diversity by paying tribute to the valuable contributions made by Hispanic Americans to our business, cultural, and educational communities. Now therefore, I, Kate Cullen, Mayor San Rafael, behalf of the council, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in this city and urge its residents to join in observing and recognizing the accomplishments of Hispanic Americans. Sylvia, I turn it to you for any additional comments.
Thank you, Mayor Kate and councilmembers. I am happy to accept this proclamation on behalf of our Latinx community. The date of September 15th is significant because it's the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September 16th and September 18th respectively. Also, Dia de la Raza, as celebrated in many Spanish-speaking communities and countries, is October 12th, which falls within this 30-day period. As a proud first-generation Mexican-American, I want to thank the council and the city for continuing to recognize the value and contributions of our diverse community. Gracias por su apoyo y su reconocimiento, thank you for your support and recognition.
Thank you, Sylvia, we appreciate you coming on and making those comments. I will open up to the public, if anyone would like to comment on this item.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if you're calling in, please press star nine and then press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment and then will be muted once time has elapsed. Give our public comment timer. I'm bringing it back to the good old days, and I'll have my timer ready, and, oh, there we go, thank you.
Thanks, I have a question. I think it's nice that you always provide an opportunity for a public comment. But when I look at the arrest demographics of your police department, I do wonder how many people who are Latino living in San Rafael would actually feel comfortable commenting on this or any other subject due to the potential for retaliation from the police department. And this isn't merely directed, this retaliation and harassment by your police department isn't merely directed at Latinos, but against black individuals and also against very poor white individuals, particularly those in the homeless population. So I just wondered the value of these proclamations when your actions don't meet them. And I wonder to what extent also, any request for participation is going to be met with deep skepticism because your actions haven't, you know, matched what you claim to be interested in. So I wonder if you can do some better outreach. And I also wonder to what extent it might be useful at this point to take a much closer look at your police department's arrest demographics, which are very, very, very disproportionately targeting the Latino community. And it is a really good way for your police department to derive revenues. I would also question why you haven't looked into the debit card scam that is unfairly targeting the Latino community through the county jail. So Latino detainees at the county jail who are then turned over to ICE, which the sheriff says he's not doing, their cash is converted into a debit card. And as various states
I see no other hands raised, but I do want to give her one of few moments. I see no further public comment.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, I'll close the public comment. And again, thank you to Nadine and Sylvia for receiving those proclamations. The final item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the ground lease to Centertown Two LP of 855 C Street. And I will turn it over to Director O'Leary, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Kate, let me just, I have a brief PowerPoint, I'm going to share my screen here. There we are, all right. Let's see, okay, good evening, everyone, mayor and council. My name is Danielle O'Leary, I'm the Economic Development Director for the City of San Rafael. And tonight, I'm bringing forward an ordinance for council approval for an affordable housing refinance known as Centertown located at 855 C Street. To start, I just wanted to give a quick background recap. On August 17th, 2020, council approved Resolution 14851, which authorized the city manager and the mayor to execute an optional lease with the leasing, bridge, and EAH. This was an important first step in helping EAH obtain refinancing to conduct much-needed maintenance and property improvements to the Centertown property located at 855 C Street. Centertown has approximately 60 units of affordable housing downtown. Briefly, as staff, after this happened in August, we committed to coming back to council to discuss the new terms of the ground lease before proceeding. And so that is what the purpose is tonight with this ordinance. The term that you see attached in the staff report describes the 99 years as the current term and the commencement date would be on or about October 22nd, 2021, which is tied to the day that the refinancing closes. Again, we talked about the premise, which is 855 C Street. And the leasing will be changing the affiliation from Centertown LTD to Centertown Two LP. And so the prior lease we had will terminate and we will be now leasing with Centertown Two LP. The base rent to the city will be a one-time payment of $83,000, which is the appraised land value, plus a dollar per year payable at closing of the loan, plus a $5,000 per year annual monitoring fee with 3% annual escalators included. How will these funds be used? Outdated building systems, including re-cladding the exterior building to protect from water intrusion, plumbing repairs, new HVAC, installing drainage systems, ADA improvements, new windows and doors, and improvement to the community and common areas will be part of this rehabilitation. The time and sequencing of the project, so we contemplate closing on October 22nd. This ordinance is being introduced for initial approval tonight at the September 13th city council meeting. And if passed, it would be final adoption on September 20th meeting. Our recommended action is adopting the ordinance and approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the ground lease agreement of the real property at 855 C Street. And tonight, we also have David Rosenthal, our legal counsel, as well as Sarah White from Bridge and EAH, who is in the public, as in the Zoom public participants. So if you have any questions there. And with that, I'm going to end my stop-share screen and be available for any questions that you may have on the item. Thank you.
Thank you, Director O'Leary, I was thinking, it's interesting because this first conversation was back in August right of last year, so it's, anyway, so it's a different crowd. So feel free to ask lots of questions, because I know we did when we first heard it back in August. So Vice Mayor, and it's August of 2020, or 20, no, yeah.
2020, yes.
The 2020, I'm like, wait, what year is it, yeah, Vice Mayor, any questions?
I just have a question about what if something unexpected happens and the project does not move to successful fruition as we had anticipated? I haven't dug through all the details of the lease, is there a provision for the city to reclaim its property?
David, would you feel comfortable responding to that?
Sure. The city's contribution to this project is essentially the dirt. And some previously made loan funds, including some forgiven lease rents. Many other parties, private and public lenders, are kicking in real money for the rehab. And the way the lease is set up, the likelihood of the city actually getting to terminate the ground lease when something, if something were to hit the fan, is pretty low. Because those lenders need the lease in effect. And so they will be stepping in and doing whatever they can to keep the project going. And not surprisingly, these documents gives them a fair amount of latitude to do that.
Okay, so the lenders will only have recourse to the actual, the improvements on the property?
They'll have recourse to the improvements and up to 99-year lease. We made it very bit, but what they don't have access to is the land itself. Very clear distinction. They have the time they need to lease the property and get them done, stay back. And once that's done, then it all reverses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Yurin Gouladi?
Hi, good evening, so thank you so much. I guess my question, you mentioned that right now we have like the tenants, this is affordable housing. So is there a protection for, you know, for like the rent increase? Because in 99 years, is there a protection for increasing rent? Or how are they going to afford to renew the building without increasing the rent?
Essentially, the same affordable housing rules that apply today with the current lease will apply with the new lease. And I know some of those are going to be in effect for at least 55 years.
So will that be like very low and low housing as well? What do you define as an affordable house?
Sure. David, do you want me to give that breakdown we discussed?
I would be delighted to use that.
All right, these are good questions, Councilmember Gouladi. The 30% AMI, which is about 10% of the units, is six units. And then we have 50% AMI, which is 18 units, that's 31% of the project. And then we have 60% AMI at 35 units, which is 59% of the project. All protected for 55 years under this new ground lease. So we're really looking at one, preservation of these units, and really important upgrades that need to be made to the property. Hence the complication of the ground lease taking so long, right? All these tax credits needed to be provided for to make it feasible. And there was a brief pause in us obtaining those tax credits, but we since have. And EAH and Bridge have done a great job, and so now we're back and able to move forward with the rehabilitation of those units. And people will not be relocated. The way that they've talked about it is that they're going to be able to work with people who are in the units and do those improvements while on-site. So we're really looking at trying to have minimal disruption as they move through.
That sounds really good, I look forward to hearing also from the community, so thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill?
Actually, Director O'Leary, I was reading on your point about not moving them. There was a clause in Section E that says that they would be moved temporarily while upgrades are performed. So I'm assuming that there will be some instances where they would need to be temporarily moved.
There would be, in cases of, if there's extensive repair on a unit, they'd be moved, but it was minimal. And I think that was a protection that they needed to, in case there was something they got into with the improvement and they wanted to make it safe for the person living there, they may have to. But in discussing with them, and also going over this through their CDBG application last year, this was part of it, their intent is to not displace anybody as best they can.
Okay, thank you. My other question was the, I just didn't understand the requirement for the ADA retrofit. It says six units are being designated for the upgrade. Is six in alignment with a percentage of the units? And within that count, is it one unit, two, and three units being equally distributed? I guess I was just curious around the ADA requirements.
You know, I will probably let Sarah answer that during public comment. If Sarah will be able to comment, she could talk a little bit more about that, about those details. ADA improvements were listed as general things they were going to do. I'm not sure how it shook out with the various units, so I'd rely on her to answer that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, so if Sarah, when we get to public comment, we'll call in and we will not have a timer because that was a direct council member question. So I don't have any questions. So with that, I will ask the city clerk to join us and conduct public comment.
Thank you. If you're commenting on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if you're calling in, please press star nine and then star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment and they will be muted once time has elapsed. And I'm going to go ahead and call on Sarah.
Unmute, all right, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, Sarah, thank you for jumping on, we appreciate it.
Absolutely, of course, happy to be here, and I'm not sure how to turn my camera, but I'll just get right into it. So the ADA, yeah, there are already ADA units, it's just bringing them up to current code. So, you know, we applied for tax credits 30 some odd years ago. And so, you know, obviously, the building code has evolved in many ways since then, including with regard to ADA accessibility. And so we're doing a retrofit of those units, which actually requires us to do a little bit more in-depth rehab of those units. So it is six units, I believe it is evenly distributed across bedroom types. I could do a follow-up email, I want to look at the plans, I couldn't quite get them open and confirm that. But that's my high-level understanding of how they distribute the unit types with the accessibility requirement, which is 10%. And then we are also doing an elevator upgrade to make the elevator more reliable. And so some households will have to be temporarily relocated. In addition to those six units, I think there's another, six households that need the elevator in order, you know, to live for their, you know, their health reasons or disability reasons. So those folks, anywhere from four to, four weeks to, I think it's eight weeks, is the time that they'll be out of the unit. So we'll provide all the assistance they need to move and then find housing and then, you know, pay the rent differential from the unit they're currently in to whatever the market the market solution our relocation consultant finds for them for their temporary stay of, you know, approximately two months.
Thank you. I was going to say, don't leave yet. Are, are you, there might be other questions. Did you have more that you wanted to add? Okay. Any, any questions of Sarah before we, is that okay, City Clerk? Or would you rather, would you rather? Okay, okay. Yes. Councilmember Mica?
Yeah, thank you so much, Sarah. So you, you mentioned that the lease is going to be for fifty years for, I mean, the lease is for ninety-nine years, but then there's like a fifty years for like the denomination for low income, if I understood correctly. So what happens after those fifty years? You know, in year fifty, are we renewing it? So what's the condition there?
Well, my suspicion is Sarah's successor at Bridge and my successor as the lawyer will be coming back to you for either the First Amendment to this lease or another round lease. Because by then, the building will be tired, just like it is now, and it's going to need tax credits to get it fixed up.
So is that the reason that you are not extending, like the, the denomination for low income? It doesn't match the, like, if we are renewing for ninety-nine years, why aren't we doing, you know, the low income for ninety-nine years as well?
The issue, that, that's actually a, an issue that we went back and forth on. The issue isn't, I'm sorry, let me try again. The city, there's a, there are two issues here. Number one is what are the restrictions? And two, who is putting the restrictions on? The property itself? When this lease, the original lease was done, the lease said that forty-eight percent of the unit had to be occupied by lower-income folks, sixty percent or less. All the other, all the other restrictions, the tax credit restrictions that Danielle has talked about and some of the others, were from third-party lenders. And those max out at fifty-five years. That same structure is with the lease today. The city's, the covenant on the city's lease, the lease itself, the city covenant, is again forty-eight percent and sixty percent AMI. And everybody else comes on tax with the much stronger covenant. That's how the deal got done, with that same structure. And that's fairly common, seeing it out in the world. If there's no other reason than the, the tax requirements go for pages and pages of how do things define and what are the exceptions? For example, what happens if someone has a really good year and makes more than their minimum income? The regulations deal with that in great detail. It's hard to deal with that in a city lease that wants to try to be a little more general. So I, Sarah, I'm sure can give more detail as to.
Yeah. Did you have anything you wanted to add on that, Sarah?
Well, just to say, I mean, it is, it is kind of an odd little industry, the tax credit, you know, on affordable housing development. And I liken to say, it's sort of like, it's trying to provide a service that the private market can provide. So, you know, it's providing essential affordable housing services for, for, you know, residents of your community that can't afford the market rent. And so, you know, the structure is sort of, feels a little strange, but we get all these soft loans that we can't repay because the rents are low, right? So they just keep accruing and then the interest grows. And, and so, you know, what, as David says, the tax credit, you know, the tax credit program has a fifteen-year compliance period, but then all the soft loans that we need to get are structured for fifty-five years. And, you know, because the rents are structured to be so affordable, those loans never get a, get paid and they keep accruing. And then, you know, eventually, as David mentioned, you have capital needs and you have to go back and resyndicate again. And then you just, you know, so things, everyone kind of keeps their, their hook in the project in, in, in terms of ensuring it stays affordable for the long term. And so that includes, you know, the city's ground lease requirement that David was speaking to. And then, you know, the city also has a soft loan, HCD has a loan. So these loans, you know, really don't get repaid. And so that's the incentive to sort of keep it permanently affordable, is you just keep going back and resyndicating and, and re-extending it and really making sure that the building is serving the community for the long run.
Thank you, Sarah. Any additional questions? I know we're in public comment, but it's just, again, this virtual environment. We are really appreciative that Sarah's called in. Any other, okay. We will let you go, Sarah. And.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your insight. Turn it back to the City Clerk for additional public comment on this item.
There are no further hands raised. However, I'm going to give them, everyone, about five seconds. Once again, press star nine if you've called in. And you can use the raise hand feature if you're participating through Zoom. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will officially close the public comment and bring it back to the council for comments prior to a motion. Love to hear some comments. Let's start with the Vice Mayor, please.
Always delighted to bring affordable housing to our residents and to continue this project and, and to upgrade it and improve the conditions that we, that we were able to offer. So this is a, a happy, a happy event and I'll be delighted to vote for it when the time comes.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Yuren Skolari?
Yeah, I echo Vice Mayor Bushy. I think this is the way to bring buildings up to, you know, new, new improvements without actually getting rid of the tenants. I would love to see that matching, you know, like the low income denomination, fifty, either go to ninety-nine or like, yeah, or like a fifty-year lease. I just think it's funny to think from here to fifty years where we will all be, because I feel that, you know where we're going to be. Well, I kind of like have the feeling where I'm going to be. But it would be kind of like nice to tie it a little bit more, just to make sure that continues to be affordable. So that's my only comment. And then how you will be, this is just food for thought, how you are going to be, I guess, recruiting when somebody is leaving the affordable housing and you, as you are, you know, getting new tenants, what is the criteria that you follow, just to make sure that that continues to be low income? But other than that, I think it's an amazing project and I'm really excited. So thank you for the improvements.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Huge credit to Director O'Leary and the team that worked on this. I mean, the layers of complexity for affordable housing is ridiculous, where there is such a need and such a demand that to stick through this project, to come to this at this point is huge and thank you for staying with it. If we could renew it right now, I would renew it right now because it will be coming back to some council in some years. But no, absolutely. I mean, this is great and huge round of thanks because I think, you know, these types of projects don't happen without having a whole team behind them to make it happen. So thank you.
Excellent comments. Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, I think I'm going to continue to echo what's already been said, but our journey toward maintaining our existing stock and trying to find new opportunities, obviously, is our, is our journey ahead. And I am very excited to support this pass-to-print ordinance when the time comes. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will also echo our appreciation of Director O'Leary and all the people that did work on this. I mean, Rachel's right. There's, there's been a lot. We had, we've had a lot of discussion about this over the years. Special thanks to EAH and to Bridge that, to Councilmember Mica's point, they'll ensure that these continue to be affordable housing units, which is what we need in San Rafael. And I'm delighted that they're going to get refurbished or get, you know, buffed up a little bit. And we are preserving these units. That is one of the priorities of this city. So thank you and thank you, David, for joining us. So with that, I would entertain a motion. And we know that the City Clerk appreciates it when we read it in. So whoever reads it, please.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay.
And let me see where I can find it. Like to make a motion to adopt ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a ground lease of real property at eight-five-five C Street, San Rafael, Centertown, to Centertown Two LP.
For clarification, pass-to-print, not to adopt, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Second, with that clarification, our roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yuren Skolari?
Aye.
Mary Kate?
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Thank you again. Thank you, Director O'Leary. That was, it's nice to have closure, to end the meeting on a high note like that. And we'll see if there's any other directors out there that we can wave goodnight to because I don't think there is anything else, this San Rafael successor agency. There's nothing on our consent calendar. And there we all are. Thank you, everyone on this camera, for what you do every day to keep our community safe and our community functioning so well. With that, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.